Alright.
Then I'll let you throw the agenda for you, it makes it easier for you to read up here.
You do what?
I do.
It's just the agenda, I threw it up.
And I have it on my screen. Thanks everyone for coming. This is a study session today on January 11th, happy new year to everybody here and anybody who may be watching. We are, I'm first going to see if we've got, oh, I was, there you go. We have a full board here today. We're calling the meeting to order and at this time before we begin open session, begin our discussion items, we will open this for any public comment. Before I go through the whole field, Brian, can you tell me if there's anyone here from the public which you?
There is none.
Okay, so if someone shows up and wishes to address the board, I will do my little speech at that time if that's alright with the board.
Sounds good.
So we will move straight into our discussion item 4.01, our measure C update.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of update the board in terms of where we're at progress rise, you know, for variety of projects happening with phase one today. I know you got introduced to the project managers at the last meeting, right, Chris introduced you to them. And that's, I think it's been, they're doing a great job. It's a good group, learning a lot as we go through this. We of course have our weekly meetings. So every week we have meetings with project managers and architects as we go through these projects and update them and make comments, those types of things. So today for me, again, most of this is really focused on the LCAP and conversation around that, but we did want to give kind of an update of where we're at with each one, right? And I'll have Chris kind of chime in as we go through them. So you'll see there's two schools, right, Baywood and Teach, that are both blank at this point. Because we're, again, with Baywood, we're talking about a whole school reconstruction, right, as we've discussed. We were gonna, we're gonna wait to see how the bidding unfolds at Pacific Beach as well as our modular sites, so that we can make some comparisons of cost and then the board can direct us and focus us on headed next steps for that site. I will tell you that we will be starting that dialogue about the site moving forward and slightly bringing an architect forward for you for the board to consider here in the next month or so. Because we can at least get the schematics going, whether they're modular or not, and start having those site conversations, parent conversations, what the site needs, what it looks like, those types of things, where we can move forward, yes.
I was reading an article that the modulars has gone up in price, something, some law passed and said that shops can unionize.
Yeah.
I just read it.
Not sure.
Okay.
Honestly, the way it's looking right now, I don't know, I mean, we'll see initially, but this, the way we've set up PB, of course, right, the Pacific Beach High School is set up like a module. So we're gonna be able to have kind of a good view of the two prices. And again, it may, it may cost the same to, you know, or close to just do stick bolt there, right? So that's something we'll, again, we'll be analyzing, assessing, bringing back to the board to kind of determine those steps. At that site, it's less of a concern in terms of the amount of time it takes, because we had modulars and ice is a fact, right, you bring them in a couple months, you're ready to go. But if we have the luxury of having time, kind of like at PB, where we're building this new school in the back lot, and I mean, yeah, you're gonna lose some field space for a while, but it's not the same, right? As, you know, as, you know, building in the middle of campus have been taking longer. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. And then of course Teach, we'll also begin to have some conversations with the site, or I would say over the next six months, to begin that dialogue about that campus. And we'll be bringing the board into that conversation, because there's some questions about just facilities in general, parent participation. We currently have our adults with disabilities program at Moro Well. You know, where are things located, what do we do with Teach if it moves into the front building, what about the, you know, the back part of the campus? So I think we'll need to have that dialogue, maybe some of our study sessions, and just start bringing the board up to date, you know, kind of getting your direction on how to move forward with those, those sites. So with our current projects, we'll start, and again, this is just a really quick, simple synopsis, right, of where we're at, okay? So we have our phase one projects, schematic design, right, which is basically just, hey, this is what we're, you know, it's kind of a site map. This is what we want to do on the site, schematic design. Design development, right, is a little bit farther, you're kind of halfway now, you're starting to really, okay, this is for sure what we're doing, you know, and here's how it lays out, you start looking at infrastructure and HVAC and all parts of build, okay? And then that, that molds into what we call construction docs. And I didn't put CDs down, because really CDs is DSA submittal. So when your CDs are done, when your construction docs are done, they put them into the Department of State Architects, right? So just for each project, and this is where we're at. And then of course, once those, once those come out of DSA, we'll bid the projects, right? And then we'll begin construction, so those, those will go. Again, Chris has a whole gigantic calendar with all these colors and dots and different things, right? I just really wanted to consolidate it, just make it as easy as possible to kind of comprehend as we move forward. So what you'll find is that we're basically, you know, SDs we've done for everything, so thus far, right? So we kind of know schematic design, we know where the temp portals are gonna go, we know where we're looking at, what we're doing. The next phase, and really, and again, just so the board knows, our project managers, as well as Mr. Bonin and Gary Gary, they go through these. Okay, so they go through all those initial schematic designs, make notes, chart it up, and send it back to the architect for them to consider and make adjustments, right? Before we move then into DDs. At DDs, they do it again, why don't you describe that process?
So what we're doing is we're going through all the plans, looking for mistakes, incorrect, you know, layouts, anything like that, and then also comparing it to our standards, our specifications, make sure they're catching those things. Now, one of the steps that we missed, didn't do thoroughly enough on measure C.
Measure D.
So we're closing that loop and doubling down by having every project manager look at every plan, right? We've fine tuned it, we've worked with one of the architects, went to their site to see the background of how they do theirs, so I'm not doing too much, making sure I'm getting the best use of everybody's time, right? And understanding the process on their end thoroughly, so I can make good decisions on this end. But the best part about this is that I have all the project managers looking at, and then they come in and they sit down and flip pages with me after they've made the markups. Gary Gary's looking at, our IOR from just the inspector is looking at them. So we're catching all these things early on, right? Because there's certain things, especially like the inspectors can catch that, it's not necessary to do this inspection, you don't need to. Architects have a standard format they'll put on there. And when I say that, that could turn into thousands and thousands of dollars of inspection that we don't need, right? So it's a good process, we're still fine tuning it a little bit, but with the project managers and the team that we have right now, everybody's measuring well, got it set up very efficient in their room, like we have a good process that we're doing that, we're just gonna unfold throughout all the phases, which is, which is making you feel good, right? That we're gonna, that will eliminate a lot of change orders, is the whole point of this, to eliminate change orders, to keep everything real tight and in my budget.
So sheet coordination, Brian, you've heard us talk about it before. It's on one sheet, it's on the electrical, but it's not on the building sheet. So when the, I didn't, it was not mine, so I didn't, you know, I didn't bid that, so now it's change order, right? That's how they, that's how it unfolds. So we're catching a lot of that as we go through the process, but it won't be everything, it's not a hundred percent. But definitely helping, I will say, and Chris has learned, as he said, through this process is, we have, a couple of our project managers are a little too Johnny on the spot, right? And they're like making comments, doing all these things before the architect even has time to do it, right? So that's where, and again, it was RIN. Chris took the team down to RIN, he got, okay, talk to me about how this unfolds, your civil department, your architecture department, your, you know, all these different things that go into, right, your structural, so that we're not spinning our wheels doing all these things, but in reality, no, we just need to let them do their job, right? So there's a, it's a balance that we're basically learning.
It's really good to see the other side, so you understand the whole process, so we make sure our process meshes and we're doing it right. So Anna, Wayne, one of the principals there, sat with us after and went through it, you know, helped us understand their end, we told them what we were thinking, and it was a good, good learning process for helping fine tune our process, so.
We had one architect tell Mr. Bonin that, listen, there's only like 1% of our district that do what you guys are doing. So that's our new setting now, we're the 1%, right, he's got a little sign in his office, we're the 1%. So it's, you know, it's hopeful, it's good, you know, in terms of moving forward. And so I'll talk a little bit about some of the struggles with things, you know, as we go through it. But just to, so you'll see, we have that district review after DD. And so again, then after the construction docs are done, then they do a whole nother review with everyone in the room. So architects, the, all the consultants, right, so your HVAC people, your electricians, right, your.
Your IOR. Fire, everybody. So we sit down and we go through that, we pull it up on the screen, and we share documents, so they all don't have to be in the office at once, we get them like a Zoom, and share, and we go through every markup on the plans that one of us has made, and make sure it's been addressed, make sure it's what the, what the answer was. So that's us, it takes time, and we've learned, we can only do one of those today, because we did two in one day, and talking about, that was exhausting. It's page flipping, reading every little thing on those plans, that's a lot. So we narrowed it down to one first day that we'll do, so we're all still fresh, we're not burnt by the end of the day. But it's been, it's been really helpful, it's been helpful, and like Brian said, us being the 1% means that we're growing from, from method D, right? Like, we're gonna make these plans tight, we're gonna, you know, I'm a, I'm an overachiever and I want us to be the best, and I want people to point to us and go, yes, they know what they're doing, right? So that's my competitiveness, we'd say, right? But ultimately saves us money and makes our jobs efficient in time, and it's good.
So as we, when we began this whole process of picking projects and sites and phases, you know, we put together a budget, right? And worked with Gary Gary about costs and square footage and infrastructure and fire alarm costs and, you know, all of those things, right, that we put together. So I want the board to know, what we do is, after we get to the DD phase, is we actually go out and do another cost estimate. So we have an outside group that will come in and actually will, sailor, different groups will actually, okay, this is what the cost is. And then we compare that to what we initially had thought, right, we're looking at that. I currently have Gary Gary going through the current cost estimates, are we, this is what, you know, I have this laid out over eight years, we're, this is, we're good, right? This is, everything's kind of coming in. So far, so good.
It's been good.
Right? In terms of cost.
That's another page flip, when we go through with the architect and the PMs, and we go through each cost light item, right? Because it's pretty extensive, they light, they light out everything. And make sure it's accurate, because there's been areas where they overplayed it, and we actually have actual costs. An example would be the portals or the modules, we know what those costs are, right? So we've gone and adjusted those costs, or profit over that, we know what that is now. So it's actually made these estimates even more accurate.
Our lease leaseback rates that we received, right, through our agreements as we've gone through, when we, you know, they had much higher cost estimates, the normal cost of the contractor was much more than what we actually are seeing in our agreement. So they had to go down and readjust the cost estimate down for those types of things, right? So overall, coming in about what, what was expected, right? So, and then, then we'll bid the project. Then we'll, are the cost estimates matched for the bid as we move forward, right? So those are all the things that we'll be updating, I'll be kind of sharing that updated budget with the board as these cost estimates come in. But you can see we've done cost estimates on several projects. We have, some of the projects have, are in DSA right now. It's slow, and we'll tell you, it's dragging in a lot of school sites. So it's just the, this whole process of going through everything, getting everything planned, getting it done, to be able to, you know, put it to DSA. And so that's just me, you know, in terms of when projects will be starting, when they will hit in, you know, is it gonna be at the beginning of summer, midsummer, fall, those are things that, you know, we're kind of running into.
The other piece of that, what we've done is we've separated out some of the projects. So like, the temporary housing piece, we pulled out as the, instead of being one complete package for the, for the site and submitted to DSA, we pulled out temporary housing and submitted that separately, because that'll go through DSA months quicker, right? And that allows lease to start doing temporary housing this summer, for sure. So, so there'll be two packages in DSA for one side. So like, for example, Bishop's Peak, we have one in for the temporary, moving the temporary housing over to the other side. And then we have our normal for the modular and the, and the construction of the building is submitted as a separate DSA.
So the, so the, when you say things are, are driving, we're getting things in, but they're sitting on, up at DSA?
So there's a couple of things that are making this slow down. One is the, the, all these ramp people and the Enviroplex, they just got their, their plans approved by DSA. So the architects were waiting on those plans to be able to submit to DSA. So those plans are just coming in, we're fine tuning those plans, because the modular and, you know, Enviroplex has their set of plans for those modulars, portals, whatever project we're doing that goes into our plans.
So they submitted to DSA?
They do a whole separate, they call pre-check. So they have a generic set of plans, they send it to DSA and gets approved, right? They're like, okay, this is, you know, we approve this set of plans.
Higher life and safety.
Right, so then that set of plans, the architects use for their project, because we're, we're doing like.
Then it goes through again.
Goes through again.
But we also have some of our consultants that these architects are using are maxed out. So that, you know, BMA is several of the projects, which is mechanical, right, HVAC, air conditioning, heating, and they're, they're just having a hard time with their own staff keeping up with the number of projects that we've moved forward, right? Because multiple architects are using BMA, because there's just not a lot of other people for them to use. So, so besides the BMA, who else is? So the other part was initially at this very first phase too, we, Chris had a couple of different groups do surveys of the whole site. So because every single time you go to do construction, you need, you have to survey the site, now, how the door thresholds are, you know, throughout, right? How high the sidewalk is, so ADI accessibility of the fields. And so instead of doing that with each project, doing a different survey each time, we did the full, just surveyed the whole case, with the whole list of every single thing, right? So now, we'll have that for the rest of measure C, we'll have the whole site ready to go here to survey. So that they're, it should take a long time.
But it's been going on for months.
Yeah, that started back in, yeah, in August.
When we get those files back, and we give them to the architects, and they start going through it. There's a checklist, they made a checklist for everything. We have them double check, and then of course there's stuff missing. Hey, and you gotta go back to the, the surveying company to have them fill it all in, because there's a lot to our survey. It's not just a quick, quick survey, it's right down to the control drunks in the, in the concrete. So they know how many pieces of concrete to take out to meet the grade, right? Like, that will save us money in the long term, instead of just being like, oh, just take out 50 feet. No, we only need to take out 10 feet, right? So there's, there's a purpose for it, but all that takes time to get it.
So what you're, if I'm understanding right, what you're saying is, you're doing a lot of front end work, checking and cross checking, but then does that, and some people are held up because they're, they just have a really heavy workload, like Toma and, and the chemical contractor, who just, some of them. Would you anticipate then that having done all of this preliminary work, when you submit to DSA, they're not gonna come back with a lot of plan check comments?
They'll find some. They won't come back. I mean, the goal is less comments, but they always come back with something.
This will make future designs and planning faster.
Okay.
So this first round of projects, yeah, it's a little slower, a little more methodical as we go through it, but now, now we're gonna have a lot of that done. You know, the next, phase two, when we start phase two, because as soon as he's going to DSA and the docs are done, we're gonna start planning for phase two.
Right.
Right, so then we're, and so your survey, it's not like we have to wait months to get in, have it in, and so it's, we're refining all of our specs, the architects get to know us, they know everything, they know what we're asking for. And so it'll, it'll just expedite the rest of the projects on the side in the future, right?
Thank you.
So, so when I did the winter reading stuff, and I noticed in some of it, it's like, community, community, reach out to community. On all these projects, I don't know, that measure, have we gotten any pushback, or should we have reached out, or?
So we, right now, Chris and I are going to every single school site.
Yeah.
So we're on their calendar to be in staff meetings, go through all the plans, and talk with teachers and staff, we talked with principals, gone through, talk to some childcare agencies, where we're doing childcare portals, those types of things. Putting it out, website, updating the website, right? Giving those principals information that they can share with their PTA meetings. I went to Pacheco's PTO, PTA meeting recently, right? So just kind of doing some of those things.
Yeah.
I will be doing a Pacheco in particular meeting soon, a community meeting there, because of, we know the difficulties with those neighbors. Other than really the fencing issues that we face with a few people throughout.
Like with you.
There's not really, but again, we've been, we have gone out there with those, all the homeowners individually, those types of things, right, as we've gone through it. You know, cut down the trees at the back of Pacheco.
Totally saw that.
Last week, okay?
You gave away the fire button.
And so other than, other than some next door comments, right, that go through, other than that.
Which were mostly positive.
So I'm just saying, there's been zero calls to the district office about that, zero, right? So I just, you know, to, you know, from that standpoint, right? So we will, again.
I also went by every day, check, check in with them, talk to them, and see if they're getting anybody coming up, asking questions, and they're all, they're all good. More was about asking from Prewood, is what it was.
So, and again, the new design will be to make that whole sidewalk be accessible, right, that ramp out of the school, we'll plant some new trees along the edge there, right? So I guess at some point, it's, do trees have a lifespan?
Yes.
Right, like, at some point, those trees have been there for 60, 70 years, they, they quote, were grown in the area. And so we're, we're putting new trees in, right? It's not like we're, it's just gonna be a concrete jungle. In fact, at Pacific, the new laws at Pat Beach, you have to have like 30% of, of all blacktop covered with trees. Appreciate it. So there's gonna be trees all over that blacktop area.
And also, even for the temporary housing, they're making us put trees in. So I'm gonna put them in concrete troths, but I have to put trees in, when we do temporary housing too. So they want blacktop covered with shade, is what it is.
You got the neighbors' permission for Pacheco?
No. We don't ask permission in times, right?
You never get it.
But it's still sharing, again, sharing site map, sharing what's happening on the site, like, in the end, this is going to be beautiful, it'll be, you know, it's gonna update our neighborhood, it's gonna make it look a lot nicer, right?
Another note, while we were there, the neighbor, I call it south of us, next, next to the school, our trees were on their side, she came over to ask, you know, to trim. And I thought they were there, I had them go down, trim the whole, that whole side, get them off her house, and she was very happy.
Those are the oaks we did not cut down.
Right, we trimmed them up, so she was really happy that we, we did that, so.
Nice.
She'll tell all her neighbors.
Good politics stuff, so we did, we also, at Los Osos and Laguna, because those are bigger projects, exterior HVAC are gonna take longer to get through DSA, we also pulled the restrooms out of those two, so at least we can get those restrooms going, construction over the course of the summer, right? We can get that, that going, that's all the gain, larger restrooms at the two middle schools. So that, you know, this is kind of where we're at, right, in a nutshell, in terms of, you know, planning and moving forward. Again, a lot still happening as we move forward, again, doing those sites visits now with staff. That's an interesting dynamic, I will tell you, right? Because our goal is really to, you know, just be real with them. Like, this is what's going, about to happen to you over the next four or five years, right, as we move forward. And, you know, we're gonna, we pay teachers, we assist them in packing and moving and doing all those things, but you will be impacted, right? There will be noise on your campus. You know, we're gonna be doing this construction while you're here. So it will take a lot of follow up with them throughout the time, right? We saw the salesmen, we saw the district fee, we dealt with two conference high schools, and so.
I also met with my staff, I pulled the custodial staff in from every site, because they're maybe the frontline, they're the ones that are gonna take the biggest breath, moving, packing. So I went through the mall room, went through all the projects, so they all know what's going on, explained in the process, and just so they had it ends up, so they know what we expect.
So I know, with some of the, with several years ago, in order to keep, say, the bus drivers employed more fully, we hired bus drivers to do certain projects for us, is that what we're kind of thinking of doing here or two? Or when we're doing all the moving, things like that, we might be able to pull from other departments that might not have full time employees to give them more full time?
We have the service worker position.
So we need them, and we'll send them over, but what I'm finding is, unless it's like the whole wing all at once, and if it's that, usually you hire the movers to come in and help, but they come in, man up and move. But what I've also noticed, like, Moro Bay, we didn't hire, there was only two custodians over break to move them all into the new building. So they just, you know, some are ready earlier than others. So our preparation is to get them all the boxes and labels, and the teachers all ready, and then the guys will just move as they, as they need to. And then what we also do is if they need more staff, we pull people from our other sites and send them over if we need to. I'm not gonna, that's what I was explaining to them, so I'm not gonna expect you to do the whole site, like, that's not the goal here. You need help, we'll get you help, right? Whether it's bus drivers, whether it's movers, whether it's more custodians, you know, so.
Just so you know, Chris, we, any bus driver wants to work eight hours, works eight hours. If they wanna work all summer, they work all summer. Like, anybody who wants to work, that's part of our last agreement, that anybody wanted a position, we would, you know, work extra custodial, fill in here or there, right? We have plenty of things for people to fill in and do, so. And a lot of the bus drivers do take us up on that, right, which really helps them in terms of, again, pay, long term benefits, health benefits, those types of things, right? But, I mean, all summer.
Yeah, it's been great.
We got a ton of buses.
And the ones that don't want to, you know, there's, I have a few that just don't want eight hours, they want six hours, and once the summer's off, so that's fine too. You have the option, that's, that's the best part about it. So it's, my opinion, it's a happy staff, you know, I'm always out there checking into them. So you hear what they have to say, hearing good and bad, right? So I was, I was trying to make it a good, good environment.
We are cautious about moving too. And the strain and stress of, you know, just having anybody come out and just start moving a bunch of stuff, right? And then they end up worker stopping by office, so there's a balance with that as well, so.
I mean, we got them right down as certain sized box, so they can't overload. But for smaller boxes, it might take more, but if you give them a big box, they load that thing full of books, it weighs a hundred fifty pounds, right? So we keep a small cert box with a label, like, we have it down pretty specific, so that works.
So the other nice thing I will tell you, as we go around and we meet with staff too, is we have the two conference high schools now. But when I go to sit down with staff, I said, you guys, listen, have you been to one of the two conference high schools? Have you seen what they look like now? That's what we're gonna do to your site, right? And so that, that visual part for them, to know that and to be able to see those things, because most of them have, right? They've been there, they've seen the site, they've seen what's happened, and they're just like, oh, you know, they get it, and they're like, okay. So it's, it's a positive thing. Reminder, we're focused on TKK, this first phase, right? That is a, that will be a huge need and next year will be miserable. Because we're gonna have a lot of, as we go through and modernize the permanent TKK buildings, those teachers are gonna be in rooms that don't have bathrooms. They don't have the facilities necessarily that they're used to, right, for a year. So there, there will be some pain next year with that, that you will, I guarantee you, will be about. Despite the fact that we're gonna go out and meet them and talk to them and hold their hand and help them through it and, you know, put them close to whatever restrooms are available, all those things. Right, we will do everything in our power to, to get through next year, but it, it's just gonna be tough, it will be tough.
I'm sorry, so you mentioned it, so there, there are so many staff in the TKK room, and now they're gonna have to walk them. So are we gonna have enough staff, the ratio gonna be able to stay?
We'll find out.
Okay.
We'll work on it.
Yeah. I'm sure there's a legal ratio that we have to.
Oh, there is.
Oh, no, no, there is.
No, we'll adhere to the ratio.
Oh, no, we already have a legal ratio, that for sure, right?
It's a question of adding an additional support staff, which we are currently considering for TK. And we're gonna talk, yes, we're talking more about that with LCAP as well, because there'll be other possible TK adjustments as we're looking at it.
Okay. And so then lastly, yeah, I will tell you, is that Chris and I did a podcast yesterday. One of Dr. Prater's podcasts, it's when we did a, a podcast on measure C and measure D that's gonna come out in a week or so. It was a good experience, I think, for us, I was, we were a little elaborate in going into it, but Terry does a great job. It was a good experience, I think, for us, I was, we were a little labyrinth going into it, but Terry does a great job. Uh, and so, you know, those are the types of things too, in terms of the community, let people know what's going on, that we'll, we'll share, right? We'll get out there, we'll be in the, you know, I'll continue to update parents and stuff in the community newsletters and those types of things, uh, as we move forward. To, to, you know, make sure people feel like they know what's going on, what's happening, as we progress.
And, and as all of you know, the, 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 this, the large, the group that would, that is going to be the most frustrated will be our teachers. And so a lot of the, um, the success of this, the, the ability to, um, successfully navigate these times in front of us will be our principals, working with the site lead, um, project manager person and the staff, the grade level team. So they know in advance what to expect and, um, and I, we found that when we do those things, it, it really makes a difference. But we, we know in our parent leader group that, we haven't even started yet. In our parent leader group, they're already hearing things from the staff that's misleading. And so we know we need to get in front of this early and, and be as detailed as we can be so that teachers know what they can expect, what they can anticipate and how we're gonna support them. And I, and then even with all that, we're gonna have to give them an opportunity to air their frustrations. So that, as board members, I want you to know, that's what we're gonna do. So when it does eventually find its way to you, you'll at least know that we've tried these things.
And we kid glove them, I mean, I want you to know. Chris, with furniture, I mean, individual meetings with each teacher and going over their furniture order and what they want and, I mean, we do a lot of kid glove stuff with, with staff, right? To give them everything they want, goes back around after the first month and checks in and what do you need, what's not working, what else can we get you, right? Like those are things we do on a constant basis. Uh, I mean, I'll give you Delmar for example, there's no, with no public on the thing, right? So we, um, we, we go to Delmar, we sit, you know, we go through the kindergarten rooms, all the things, do all the things they want. We're gonna add the two new modular buildings there, right? And, you know, even after that, even after going through all of that, and they're gonna get this beautiful new thirteen hundred fifty square foot classroom and restroom and staff room and all these things. But, can I just stay in my current classroom? I don't wanna move, I don't wanna have to pack.
Right.
I don't wanna have to move.
Sure.
Well.
Change is super difficult.
Unfortunately, unfortunately for the program, for the program of the school and what's best for kids and the long-term for the campus, kindergarten needs to move into those two spots.
Right.
TK needs to move into these two rooms. So that, I mean, just so you know, right? Sometimes no matter what we try to do or work them through, there's issues, but we'll still do everything we can to make it as easy as possible for them, um, as, as we progress.
I'll give you a positive, like I just walked through eight hundred yesterday and met with all those teachers and they stayed inside, they love it, right?
This is special education, especially the building, it got moved in.
They love it, they're, they're nesting in there, like very little additional stuff, right? Like, we did really well, like they got everything pretty much they wanted, there's a few pieces here and there I'll get for them and, but everyone, everyone I talked to seemed really happy, so.
And, and I just, and I just wanna say this out loud. Primary teachers in particular are, um, if, if you've ever taught, then you know that the, what might seem simple as just move your classroom. You're gonna be, this year you've been here, or okay, the last twenty years you've been here and we're gonna have you go over here for the next two years while we finish all this. But to a teacher who's really nested and been a part of that, knows where everything is and, um, has made that room part of their system. It is incredibly disruptive, not just, not just practically speaking, it's disruptive emotionally. So there's a heavy weight that comes with it, um.
Return.
The positive of that is it makes them purge.
Yeah.
That's what I will tell you, so, Pacheco Elementary School, Pacheco Elementary School in particular, where each teacher has their own shed behind their classroom. Uh, and you, you know, like, hey, cause they're like, Marcelo, what are we gonna do? And I'm like, well, they're gonna throw stuff away, Marcelo, and we'll have the trash bin located. Cause I personally went through each of the sheds and besides the fifty-year-old globes that they have in there or the books that are thirty years old that they've never touched, that are all dust and gross and, like, you're gonna get all new stuff. Like already, we have new additions, we have new cabinets, your room, like you're gonna get these new things, right? So, so it, it's actually some, in some ways, it gets painful.
Yes.
It just takes their time and that's why we pay them, right? We pay them a couple, eight hours, you know, sixteen hours to pack, sixteen hours to unpack, right? Teacher hours is like forty bucks an hour now, so it's not bad, uh, but it's, you know, and we'll get them in there as soon as possible, let them do it as slow as they want or as, you know, those types of things.
Are those sheds full of mice and black little spiders?
Oh, I get it, I don't.
No, that's.
Do you really wanna know?
No, that's. Honestly, they're always closed, they're never open, then I don't think they ever even go in, so we just have stuff in there that they shut there, right? So.
And, and the, the only reason I'm, we're even talking about this is, is there's a, we need to recognize, there's an emotional toll that goes with really fantastic celebrations like modernizing the schools.
At the end of the day, yeah.
And that emotional toll will be with us for the next five years.
It's also this, this whole idea of, of I worked really hard and now I'm gonna, you know, and moving is real, moving is really, really.
Well, especially for people that are into their careers. Well, I only got two years left, don't move me, I only got two, oh, this is the building we're, we're going through, so.
It's like leaving the house you raised your children in. There's an emotional attachment to that space and I, I, sure, um, it's a very difficult proposition.
I guess.
I'll say I threw, I've got a couple friends who are elementary teachers and they talked during measure, measure D, talked about having to move. And to a person, they said I had no idea how much stuff I had that I'd save and that I don't need anymore. Some of it was hard to say, cause a lot of it, some of it I took home, but a lot of it I got, so, cause really that's.
So my last update, my last update for you to let you know that we still have, again, so, um, San Luis Obispo High School, back road done, completed. Doing a punch list on the landscaping through there. Um, we are currently, uh, doing some kind of lipstick on the, the new wellness center, inquire room. So cleaning those up, cause that will now be the wellness center there, um, at that high school. And then in the back, we have cleared next to the school farm there, that area, with, uh, the goal be to expand the school farm. So we're gonna be able to put a pipe there, expand the land in that area, have a, this is, you know, right now the current situation where the cows get out and, you know, those types of things. Now on the road, a road that you'll be able to drive all the way through, right? They'll be able to duplicate the animals in, again, those are, that's something that's happening. Um, with the fire, the city's actually tending down, a bunch of the burnt trees, the city's paying for it, some of it in the back, so great for us. Because of the storms, we lost almost the, the freshman, what's gonna be the freshman baseball field, right behind the dugout area there, it's really like gone away. So once the trees are gone, um, we have Alex Garcia is gonna come in, build that back up next to there, right? In the meantime, we're right now at Taylor Field redoing, so it can actually be two baseball fields, right? There's now softball, two fields down there, so currently they're, they're putting the new.
New field, they, they expanded the field out via baseball and field out of softball. So, and it means new sprinklers, you know, new dirt, uh, it's all pretty much almost done. Then they'll back their way out and fill in the ruts when they throw, throw all the dirt in. So, uh, yeah, and then the, the tree guy who we use is actually the guy who's gonna take down the seed trees, that's why the equipment's still there. So it worked out perfect, so.
Still the right hand, be careful.
He's gonna use the access from our side to get to those trees and then he, that little road he's made in there will allow Alex Garcia to get in and do, fix the hillside. It actually all worked out pretty well for him, so.
So in Slohan, we still, I think we're gonna, we're pretty much the last, the last thing we'll do in Slohan will, we need to do kind of the model classroom inside the, the fine arts, the fine art club. So the surrounding, that, that kind of, that's the last thing to do, uh, in terms of that site. Moro Bay is now complete, so that whole huge parking lot in the back is open, right? So they can, they don't have to walk through the office center and their speedos anymore, and all that, and that.
I've got, I've received some really wonderful feedback on Moro Bay.
It looks beautiful, yeah, it looks really good. Uh, the library, new library, the new classrooms throughout, you know, Moro Bay's forced to have this really cool kind of interior corridors now. They used to be the hallways, so in terms of expanded and group work and, I, I mean, it's just really nice, they did a great job going through it all. You know, Scott's still, you know, they need to determine where things are gonna go, how long-term, who's gonna go where, those types of things, but, um, it, it's good, right? It's just a little thing, so they decided to keep their career center up front. But in the three hundred building, there's a sign next to the classroom that says career center. And so, oh, hi, yeah, what's going on, you know, so, oh, how, we're just gonna change the sign, like it will take the cursor's light off and it'll, it'll be the classroom. Like, look, like, easy guys, easy, right? So it's just, it's interesting, some of the things that pop up as you, uh, as you hit stuff, but, so for Moro Bay, just so you know, we currently have our lights, new field lights and new stadium fixtures in DSA for Moro Bay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's something that those lights are falling off, it's, it's, I, it's, it's a safety risk. So that whole process is in DSA right now going, okay, so in terms of for the summer for Moro Bay.
That would be very nice.
And so really the last thing on that campus potentially is there's a few rooms off of the, the newer gym that just, you know, they need to, some hooks and paint, types of things inside, the resting room, there's kind of a storage room with some junk in it. But other than that, I mean, it's, it's pretty done. Jessica, right now, my secretary's putting together some, um, large plaques for us to do kind of a dedication at both sites. And so we'll be setting a date for that, for public, kind of dedication thanking the public for their, the bond measure ride and, um, kind of moving forward with, uh, you know, having our, our measure D group, that kind of the, the three parents, right? That, um, Mr. Clausen being one of them, helping us get measure D passed, will be, you know, some of our project managers, Mr. Bonin, the board, right? Dr. Prater, you know, our contractor, those types of things, so.
We're on the board at the time.
Yeah, right, so we can do some dedications out. All right.
Any question?
Yeah.
This.
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
So, um, can you remind us what portion of measure C budget the phase one is?
So it's, this is all measure C.
No, I got it, what portion of the total measure C is?
Um, I don't know, I'm running, uh, of the.
That's fine. So you mentioned that cost estimates were generally on budget?
Uh-huh, some lower.
Were there many that were like materially higher or lower at this time of all?
I don't think so.
No, no, it's just, if any would question like, I see it's lower, so, why is it lower? And then the couple that were higher.
We're not getting what we thought, right?
And then the couple that were higher is one where we, we actually had some, some better numbers to put in there, so, or like the modulars and the, the, uh, utility work was actually dropped too, but there's some good things that we were able to bring those number down, so.
So we are, as we go through these projects, and I will tell you, we've had to add some scope at times. Just some, some scope, some things, so, you know, new electrical service, maybe things that, you know, those types of things that now as you go through and go, hey, you're gonna have to do this, and so you don't wanna go back in and bust all the concrete that you were doing to put it in after the fact, right? So you might as well do a phase one, so, I'll, I think what we could do is we'll, we can kind of share that with you, that maybe the next study session, kinda, hey, here's where we're at with these projects again and kind of what's going on in terms of scope and what's added, I mean, uh, Los Ranchos in particular, right? So they, even when we do the TK building, they really need more, they, they need more K buildings, more K classrooms. So we're actually looking at a separate, you know, kind of three modular K's, um, project as well at Los Ranchos. So those are the types of things.
That was not originally anticipated?
Not, no, cause we, we, we had talked about them moving into some of the classrooms there, but the reality is, is they have these old seven portables in the back. That really, you're not gonna put, I mean, you're not gonna put a K classroom, there's no restrooms, there's no, so, and so again, do, do we use those seven portables as tip houses somewhere else? And save money from not having to buy buildings, by taking ahead a little bit about potentially? Laguna's gonna eat, gonna eat tip house.
Just the amount of, amount of work, like try to do, there's nowhere to move teachers, so we're gonna need a way in classrooms so, so we can take down a building at a time. Logistically, it's going.
When you say they're old, are they appropriate and serviceable and?
Yeah, and it's just like our portals that we have down in Slohan right now. You take it, you put a new roof on it, you paint it, you put new inside carpet, it's a temporary classroom, it's not something you're gonna wanna keep for forty years, but for the next five years, it's very serviceable. Or it's Slohan, they'll wanna keep those for the next twenty years, right? Cause you put a new roof on it, new, and it, it looks nice.
So when you're talking about adding new K classrooms to Los Ranchos, was that originally contemplated or is that an additional cost?
It, it would be that we would do less portables along the back end instead of a replacement, is what I would say.
Anything else, Brian?
Uh, yeah, so timeline wise, how are we tracking compared to your original timelines?
Slow.
How much are? Six months.
Three, six, three, six, depending on.
That's why, that's, that's why we started splitting some of the projects.
Depending on sites, depending on sites.
Trying to do the, do the temporary, so, I mean, I'm pushing, 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 but, but the mechanicals just maxed out, they can't do all the projectoma, you know, environmental.
In PG&E?
Some contractor ball, yeah.
And doing, and getting PG&E on board?
Yeah.
It's like, you know, forever to get them in terms of service or new service, those types of things, right? We've had to go into, again, just all, everything, right? So the flow test at Delmar is, it's too low, so we have to put sprinklers into the two modulars at, at Delmar. So there's things like that that you come across as you go through the process that slows things down a little bit. Um, the other aspect of that is, um, what else?
There's another one I was gonna.
Flow test, one, um, electrical loads.
Yeah, electrical loads, Toma going in.
Big one where, that's a thirty-day reading before they can do even the sign. So as they're going through, add the air conditioning, you know, there, you know, that's more electrical load, so they're, they have to do the thirty-day reading.
Make sure the service is big enough to cover the new AC.
You know, there's multiple panels, not just the main load.
And these are not things that we, like, so I mean, this liquid's got their calendar, say, hey, we need a sixty-day reading of the electrical.
So their overall timeline for measure C is just slightly behind or does it affect?
Yeah, three, six months.
Thinking of it out of school year type expectation?
No, no. We would have liked to have started the day after school without.
Uh-huh.
And it may be September, August, this kind of, you know, again, very, depending on the project. Like we wanna make sure, like Pacheco, tip housing in, that has to be in, then we can move the teachers in, they're set, and then hey, when demo starts, demo starts. But the building's empty, we can get going, whatever, right? So those are the types of things.
So what is the mindset on, on average elementary school, how many years of disruption? Like if someone says, oh, this is a lot, um.
Eight years.
Yeah, you mean five.
I would say eight.
Okay, so what's the time?
The reality.
Timeline for all the rest of the, that we've done is eight years.
For school?
First, eight years.
I mean, they're all having to take time, they're all saying things they happen, right? But it, it's, yeah, five to eight years.
So you're kicking off a process really where the first major disruption is occurring this summer or the next fall?
Twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
And it's probably gonna be, you're saying eight years?
Twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-two. Depends on the school.
Yeah.
Right, depends on what, like PB is a two-year construction, done, they're, they're done, right? Baywood, that's a whole, that'll be a couple of years, right, to build Baywood and they're, they're done. But some of these other ones, I mean, we're, you know.
Like, like Laguna's, you know, doing the roofs, we can't do the roofs while they're in school, right? We can do, we've isolated, like the gyms we can do during school, the kitchen we probably can do during school, MPR we can do during school. But the others, we can't be overhead making all this noise, so that's gonna be a phase two year, um, phase one is two-year phase, basically, so it's.
That'll be the total, like, exterior of the campus will be completed, all the way track. And then we would go and do, okay, wing of classrooms, this wing, you're going to the temporary portables, then we'll go inside and do all the insights, right? Do everything, and then you'll move back in and then the next wing will go. Do everything, and then you'll move back in and then the next wing will go to temporary portables and then come back in.
But it's much more complex than if it were just a vacant building, you could move in.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, absolutely.
Sounds like, it's kind of like the difference between Morro Bay and San Luis Obispo High School. Where they're moving a lot, but in San Luis Obispo High, they were moving, you know, temporary classrooms.
Yeah, that's it.
Morro Bay High, they were able to move into other classrooms, other places.
Still moving though, still moving.
Right, yeah, it's still moving, it's still a house.
Yeah, for sure.
Final question, so the modulars at Slow High, are they going away eventually? Can you get them off yet or you can't? Because the, right, or so.
So the road is now done, just got completed.
You mean the front road?
This is the truck.
San Luis Drive or the back?
No, no, San Luis Drive, the front.
Yeah.
That, that's the hangup, was getting to finish that, that work.
They're maybe.
They just, yeah, it's, it's almost completed.
This is the work on San Luis.
So those, first one, along the road, those are going for Jacob.
Okay.
Right, those, those are the first ones to leave this summer.
So they're gonna be there till the summer and then you move in the summer?
Yeah, well, the other, you know, the other.
Spraying whatever we can.
The move, the movers, there's only like two movers for, for the portables. And you have a lot, like, I just locked one up today for Bishop's Peak and working on Jacob right now. If I don't get him now, everybody's trying to grab him. So I got a nice carrot hanging from him, because I got so many to move, so. And we've worked with him before, he's the one that moved Morro Bay, CL Smith, portable, so.
At some point too, you will, I would like to use developer fees to replace the current portables that are next to the old gym.
Replace and keep portables there?
Or a sick bill building or modulars or something in that area, right? So again, we're gonna, after this first phase, it's bid, we're gonna have a real good indication about what a module costs, what sick bill costs, per square footage, those types of things, right? But I mean, those are temporary portables that are the, I mean, we got those from the Tascan Arrow, because they were already like forty years old.
So you're saying that the five that are kind of along the main part of the campus will leave and then?
Those are already empty, yeah, those will be gone.
Okay.
The ones next to the old gym are currently, they can't handle not having those.
Okay, they're still using them.
They still wanna, yeah, they, they're still using those now. I mean, I'm gonna go through their master's, they'll only be there with these, we'll see, right? But eventually, I think that would be a great use of developer fees. Broke at that site to replace those at some point with whatever the plan would be, right? So.
Is the removal of those five portables kind of the final step before you say San Luis Obispo is done, done?
Yeah. I mean, it's pretty much done now.
Or is this just the third, are you saying?
We don't really consider any, you know, there's still, there's still some cleanup. I wouldn't want to tell the staff that we're completely done with Slow High, because like the 500, we still need some luck, right? So.
Garage door.
Both sides won, beach volleyball courts, right? Those, you know, there's, there's always gonna be something that kind of ties in. But in terms of Measure D, Measure D funding, Measure D is done. We're done, right? In fact, moving those portables, that'll be Measure C, right? Because we're gonna utilize those for Measure C projects. So the Measure D, yeah, we're, you know, the, the funding is down at Measure D. So.
Okay.
That looks beautiful.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, um, this was just a discussion item, but I'll go to the public. Is there anyone from the public?
There's no public.
Here it is, we do have Ms. Baltadonna from the public, which is like, is, so, is Baltadonna, any comments, questions, concerns? Nothing?
Raise their hand.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it's Erica and I was trying to unmute myself. Um, it's complicated on a, on a phone. I do not have any questions or comments at this time, but thank you.
Wanted to give you that opportunity. All right, um, so that takes care of our first agenda item. We will move on to the LCAP.
I was wondering, good afternoon, board, did anyone wanna take a quick break at this hour? Mark in, I see Mark asking for one, and shall we take a brief?
I can take it, so.
Well, it's two, it's two fifty-seven, but we're all back here at three ten.
No, we have something for.
I said, that's great.
Yeah. Nice to see you have handed out. I, yes, we can't talk about it for one second. Yeah.
Yeah, who closed that door?
I'm gonna be honest with you, Larry. Come on, I'm ready.
Thanks.
Hey. Here we are, we are in the meeting and we are ready for the presentation on the L cap process. So.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, board. I am here with Stephanie Shepherd today to talk to you about our LCAP planning process for next school year. Unfortunately, Leslie O'Connor is out for the rest of this week. He'll be back next week, but he couldn't join us and Mrs. Board is at a conference. And so she couldn't be with us today. And this is our first time presenting about this topic, but we know that you all, this is a every year requirement kind of thing. And so I know you all have some familiarity with the topic already. In addition to that, Mrs. Hinton asked that we provide some documents that you can follow along with. And so this is not attached in the PowerPoint slideshow I'm sharing. This is additional information to you, which is already posted on our website and publicly available to anyone who should want it later. And I will be just referring to some of these documents as we go through the presentation to tell you how they relate to the presentation. And if at the end you have any questions related to these documents, I'll be happy to answer them later. Okay, so the LCAP, which stands for Local Control Accountability Plan, provides an opportunity for local educational agencies called LEAs, like the school districts, to share the story of how, what, and why the programs and services we choose to do are selected to meet our needs. And so that's how CDE, the California Department of Education, defines what we're doing through the LCAP. Officially, it's part of California's local control funding formula, but as you know, we're a basic aid district, so that's all a little different and unusual for us. It is a three-year plan we write, but then has to get updated and reviewed annually. So we are at the, this school year of 2324 is at the end of the last three-year cycle. And so we are writing a new LCAP for the next three years. But whatever we write our plan to be, it will still be evaluated and changed in year two and year three going on from that. It's supposed to describe our key goals for students with specific actions we're going to take. That includes budgeting to achieve special goals that we're trying to achieve for students. And we also have to name the metrics or how we're going to evaluate if the plan is working or not. On the right-hand side there specifically, the LCAP was designed to address, we have to specifically name those subgroups of English learners, homeless foster youth, and socio-economically disadvantaged students. So the things we are putting in our LCAP are supposed to primarily address those three student groups' needs. In addition to that, there were eight California priorities that they say when you write your LCAP, it has to address some of these eight ideas. And there are student academic achievement, which ours does, student climate, which is our culture of care wellness, mental health step, which it does. We want students to access a broad curriculum, and we have to include parent engagement, which you'll see that we're going to break links to do later on. We are allowed to add our own local priorities as well. And I did at the very bottom link in the California Ed Code, if you'd like to read it, which outlines the rules California has for doing that. There we go. So what changes are new coming up in the new year from before? Is we are required to provide an LCAP mid-year report to you all. It has to be by February 28th each year. So in February at a board meeting, we will be going over the LCAP mid-year review for this year's program and LCAP. There are some changes to the template that we're going to be doing. And the template actually I put in your packet as the third item of the packet. It looks like this. If you're curious about what the specific changes are to the template, it has notes in here about what's new or different that you can review later, ask questions. And there are updated approval criteria, but we have already been doing all the board approval stuff. Like there's not going to be anything new for us. And there are increased monitoring requirements. And what that means is, is if we say our metric is going to be students passing the SBA, the CAS assessment, and we find that we didn't reach our goal, we are required to change the actions to address that in the LCAP, in the following revision of the LCAP. So you're not allowed to say we're trying to increase student achievement by doing A, B, and C. And if there is no increased student achievement, you are not allowed to keep doing A, B, and C. You're required to switch to D, E, and F, if that makes sense.
So how do you? How do you switch from, A, B, and C are logical steps. How do you switch from D, E, and F without, without confusing?
I, in sitting through some of the webinars, my understanding right now is that we would have to make course adjustments or course corrections to the action steps that we're taking. If they're showing, if they're proving to be ineffective action steps, then we have to adjust. It doesn't mean that they're scrapping them altogether, but we would need to be able to explain how, what, where, and why we're going to tweak things so that we are seeing the desired results that we're projecting.
So we might keep A, B, and C and add D and B, maybe a better description.
So at what point is something not effective in two percent?
We get to set our metrics ourselves.
Yeah, we get to actually write our metrics out and state what that success will look like. And really, I think success wouldn't look like our score is declining. Okay, so if we're seeing if we're correcting student success, then they would want us to correct them. Or if we're showing stagnant growth over time, then that obviously we're not meeting our metrics.
It sounds an awful lot like progress monitoring on a bigger scale. And it seems like as we do with progress monitoring, maybe a good teacher knows this, that this doesn't seem to be, this strategy doesn't seem to be working, I'm going to tweak it. And, and that tweak might be the aversion, modified version of A, B, and C, and we're going to call it D, E, and F.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Is that a good, is that what you're looking at?
So we might call it a formative assessment correction.
That's right.
And then leading to the summative at the end.
I think to make sure that we meet our goals in the summative domain. Yeah, I would think so. I like, I like it.
Okay, so these are, currently we have three focus areas with three goals. And it is our recommendation that as we move forward after reviewing these, they are good areas to continue to focus on. So the first focus bucket one is rigorous, relevant, engaging instruction and curriculum. And of course, we know that's super critical, super critical to the success for students. And the actual goal was written as all students will achieve substantial academic gains through rigorous, relevant, and engaging instruction and curriculum. So this is one of the areas we're going to be seeking feedback on from the board and other stakeholder groups about what our goals could, would, should be. But to our thinking, this is obviously where it all starts, is really high-quality best-first instruction for students.
That's a clarification question.
Yeah.
Um, in this context, when we say all students, do we mean all students or do we mean the students in the three subgroups from the previous slide?
We mean all students and while paying attention to the students from the, those three subgroups.
Okay.
So we'll be collecting metrics on all of our subgroups where we have significant groups, subgroups of students.
Okay.
If that was kind of right.
We've used this as kind of our all category.
Yeah.
We want to have greatest stretch for all kids. And by having greatest stretch for all kids, it's going to help, right? You know, with disadvantaged, right? English learners and foster homeless youth, right? The positive part of it. That's a little bit more broad. And I would say more focused on first, first best instruction.
First best instruction, K-12.
Focus area one is first best instruction. Yes.
So could we say the reverse? I'm just for discussion. Can we say that if we focused on the subgroups and their achievement, would that affect specifically on the subgroups?
Number two.
We'd probably doubt all, all of the rise of the number two.
Yeah, which is why number two, right? So number two then refocuses to the multi-tiered, yes, academic support. And so all LCAP identified student groups, foster homeless youth, ELs, and the socio-economically disadvantaged will achieve substantial academic gains through a multi-tiered system of support. If you're, multi-tiered system of support is the new word for RTI, response to intervention. So it means we're providing those individualized intervention-specific supports for small groups or individual students to succeed and build their knowledge gains.
So back on focus one, going back to that, the, the monies that we spend and the interventions that we implement, and, and the curriculum that we present is for all students. And within that scope of all students, the targeted groups will benefit. And the opposite of that would be Title I funding, where the money is spent, is targeted and spent specifically for SED students, English language learners. But there is an ancillary benefit that all students may receive from.
And I would say the requirements for our Title I spending differ slightly based upon the percentage of SED students that qualify within each site. So we have some sites. Most of our sites are school-wide. So that means that their title restrictions are less. They're able to spend their funds in a way that benefits the entire student population because they've reached a threshold where they're tipping over to, I, I think it's around 35%.
Yeah, that's what I was about to.
But please don't quote me on that. It, it would be on our CD website, and if you're curious, I can look it up. But it's approximately 35%. Once you cross that threshold, you become what is considered a school-wide Title I designation. Falling below that, then you are held to actually much stricter standards for those, the spending of those title dollars. And we actually are held accountable for reporting how those dollars are specifically targeted to benefit those students in that smaller, below 35% of student population. And we are needing to show how are we spending those dollars on that smaller population versus a school-wide.
So.
Thank you for explaining that.
Absolutely.
It's actually 40%.
40%.
I think that is the correct.
So, so pursuing those thoughts, so then why doesn't CDE just say, here's all the money you have? And make sure if all kids succeed, why aren't we even, why aren't they even naming the subgroups? And so in my mind, they're really looking for us to focus on the subgroups. And if there's ancillary benefits to the rest of the district, oh, that's fine. Am I making sense?
You are making sense, and I, I don't necessarily have the answers for why the CDA, CDE makes the decisions that it does. But I can say that with our funding, our, our lens that we're looking at is one of equity and trying to close the achievement gap for our students. I mean, that entire focus two really is allowing us to dive into looking at our subgroups and.
I appreciate, I just, okay, that's not, that's a long list.
And at this point, is it closing the achievement gap? I mean, because, well, we're not there yet, but many of our higher performing students, it's more, you gotta go from, the gap is, you gotta raise those lower.
Exactly.
And students, you know, we're, so we aren't as concerned about them, our higher achieving students. You know, it's a longer, it's a greater look from the bottom up.
That's what I'm trying to say, I guess, and what it feels like, and I wish I'd seen this sooner, but in four years. Is, is the, there are what is it, three or four subgroups are specifically called out? That, that's, thanks. That, that's, seems to me now that I think about it, that's where the LCAP money is supposed to be spent. And you know, our focus number one, maybe it just reverse, focus two and focus one. I don't know.
That's so interesting.
Chris, and then surround you. To, to, to sort of aside and marks, I, I believe that, that there are three target groups that the state has set, but districts can choose to target other groups as well. And specify, and specify those in their LCAPs. But my question was, since we have varying numbers of students who would maybe fall within those target groups, and we're going to be looking at a more essentially accountability for them, are we going to look more granularly at the numbers of students within each subgroup when we set our target, when we set our target goals?
Yes, it would make sense to do that.
Ron?
Let me see if I have an idea of what the multi-tiered approach looks like. Let's say you have Jimmy.
Triangle.
He's in a, he's in a group. He's been, he's been unidentified. He has whole group instruction. Then Jimmy goes to a small group instruction, that another tier. Let's say Jimmy then goes to an individual instruction, is that yet another tier. Do I have that right?
You sure do. It would likely be so Jimmy is learning, reading instruction with all of his class for the first 60 minutes and 30 minutes of the time. It's like practice time where kids break up into groups and the teacher will be with Jimmy's group and some other people will be working by themselves. And then if that doesn't help Jimmy increase his performance at the rate to close that achievement gap, then maybe rather than being in class with six other kids from his class, instead he goes to another room with another educator. We usually call them ATI teachers here. They're fully credentialed teachers, where he gets additional targeted instruction to meet his needs.
But it is additional, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, one, one tier will not supplant another. It will be in addition to.
Yes, we will not be pulling children out of their core instruction to get intervention because then they're missing the instruction of the core that they need.
Right.
Nicely framed. And Mark, I, I guess I would like to respond if I could, the way I see this. I, I'm a linear person and I love tables. But how this works isn't, isn't in a linear way. It's, it's, um, it's more like, I think I heard someone say a triangle, you know? It, it, it's, it's really a funnel. You're, you're talking to all kids, but those kids that need the extra help are, we, are, are, we articulate a very specific intervention for the kids that need it. They are getting that, like Mark, what you're saying. But it's all, it's not siloed. It's integrated. And so it, it's a more sophisticated application than what this might infer.
But, and, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate Chris kind of, but I'm not sure the spirit of LCAP maybe is to focus on non-SED, right? I mean, I'm not sure we would do a pullout or something for non-SED as a subgroup. So this is a much broader discussion maybe than right now, but I appreciate the three of you really helping.
I think if you look at it this way too, focus area one is first best instruction in the classroom. Like that is the number one priority thing that we can do to help those three groups of kids. Mark, it is. That's the number one, to help EL, foster homeless youth, like that. First best instruction is the, the best thing we can do to help those kids achieve. Now, on top of that, if we want to do pullout, have me up ass, do other things, the focus area two, right? That, that's great. Those are extra things that we're going to do for those kids, specifically for them. But really intentional culture of, of care, I mean, it could honestly be focus area one A, one B, one C, right? Like they're all one, in a lot of ways.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
But I think for our staff too, our staff needs to know that we are focused on first best instruction. Like you, you're the two, you're the two instructional leads in the school district, right? Like you don't, you know, your kids, you know, my EL kid Jimmy, I'm not going to rely on, oh, well, I'm just going to send Jimmy to the AIT teacher to get help. No, no, you're, Jimmy's your student. You're going to teach some of your class, you're going to put, and we need to put that emphasis, especially as we have to start to get rid of some of our interventions.
Yeah.
Really need to focus on that first best instruction.
And Jimmy needs to have access to the curriculum.
If, yes.
Jimmy needs to have access to the regular education curriculum, and then we supplement that. And that's the law, right?
And we want to be able to, I think, Mark, also, the reason, I want to make sure that we can use LCAP funds to focus on improving all of our instruction. Because if we changed and took out that all instruction and just said instruction for those three groups of students, I think it would diminish how we need to strengthen the core for everybody.
So then two questions come to me. First of all, is LCAP primary dollars or secondary dollars? So is it extra, like is it extra money or is it?
It's supplemental. It's extra.
It's extra for the next year.
The state's saying there's three groups that we're most interested in and others that may be unidentified. So Jimmy's in the classroom and the teacher's, it's her responsibility, his responsibility, the teacher's responsibility to work with Jimmy, then does that pull her away from the rest of the group at some point? So I, these are big philosophical questions that I don't, there's no way we're going to solve them today. But, but I, I suddenly wonder about, that money is coming to us for those three subgroups.
And the reason I like this so much is exactly what Ryan said. Is I've watched in public education, best of intentions, best of intentions. This idea of pulling kids out by their specific needs. And the problem is, is I've seen it time and again, the John Hattie's work about what makes the biggest difference in achievement for all students is first and best instruction. So by doing it this way, we know that those kids that need it the most are getting access to the curriculum, to first-time best instruction. So it's yes, and they get these additional things, right? And that's the spirit of the LCAP. Because without the, previous to the LCAP, we had this RTI model, response to intervention. And in many districts, what that looked like was, oh, well, let's hire a reading specialist. And we're going to pull Joey out of class to help Joey learn how to read while Joey now misses an entire section of class. So what we know is that actually served, it actually decreased achievement, didn't increase achievement. So all students will achieve substantial gains, includes those subgroups targeted by the LCAP. Because it, it acknowledges that the best things for those students that are in those three groups is to be a part of the classroom, main instruction.
And so another, so just another model that I've seen used is the, the classroom itself is divided up into smaller groups. And the teacher can do Jimmy and puts everybody together and she's still, the teacher's still doing core, core classroom work. Nobody's getting pulled out, but the focus.
But that would be focus one, Mark. What you just described is focus area one.
Our teachers are already doing that.
Our teachers are all taking, making small groups?
That should be part of the, that should be part of their just engaging instruction on a daily basis in their classroom. They should be doing that.
But remember, in our district, we have, we have primarily taught our teachers to do is the workshop model, which is exactly that.
Is that?
I have problems with it. It, because it's, the best of our teachers do it really well. But some of our newer teachers, so those that have not been experienced at it, it's, it's really, really difficult to maintain engagement. And so I, I, that's another conversation. So why we're adopting an ELA curriculum is because there's so many. So why we're adopting an ELA curriculum is because there's so many holes in that methodology. Um, so we're going to tighten it up, I'm not saying eliminate it, I'm tight, tighten it up. And so I think, I think, um, what you're gonna see in the coming year is a strong focus on, on alignment to the science of reading through an excellent reading curriculum. And you're gonna see assessments built into that, you're gonna see progress monitoring, you're gonna see rotations, you're gonna see LCAPs are really cool stuff. Which, which is why, um, these focus areas are lined up the way they are.
That's why we disaggregated data that helps us do the monitoring. That monitor piece.
And why are professional doctors gonna be so important, it's huge.
So by the workshop thing, that would be where the auxiliary teacher pushes in to the classroom. And the kids that don't, are all on focus one and are meeting their academic standards will have their win time, is that correct? So that it.
That's right.
And so, but that is a, like, is that what we would refer to as a workshop model? I mean, I want to make sure we talked about the same thing then.
Typically, that's called differentiated instruction. And so when we're, when we're doing small groups where we're grouping students according to like a skill need or a gap that we're seeing in their knowledge base, then we call that differentiated instruction or differentiated small groups. Some districts call that win time, I, I have not seen yet that we're to the point that we're running small groups in the, in the manner that we're currently describing right now during win time. Um, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay. Well, we are having dialogues with our principal leadership group at the elementary level. They just met about what is the core instructional minutes on a master schedule going to be for English language arts? And what will the proportion of win time be for students? And once we establish that time, then we can start having dialogues about how to use that time efficiently and effectively to meet the needs of all your kids, which is going to be part of the robust professional development plan that we're putting together as it relates to the new curriculum adoption, which relates to the Prop 28 plan that we're creating so that teachers have time together to collaborate during this holding. So we have moved down and started brainstorming possible solutions to address the needs of these, you know, diverse student needs across our, our district.
And I, and I, I would point out, unless we change things, we're supplementing the, the LCAP funding that we get from the state through our general fund. So, so we're essentially affecting all students through the general fund usage, without a question.
You know, I didn't share at the very beginning, I think it's six, eight million, seven million? Six million-ish is the amount of dollars that are LCAP dollars, um, for us to plan for.
Which is more than what we're required to do. No, no, that's, that's what we're required to do. We actually spend about eight to nine.
Yeah.
That's why.
Yes, what we have, what we're supposed to supplement is about six. But we, but to get to Chris's point, we're supplementing it to the tune of an additional two to three million bucks.
Okay.
Okay?
Focus three is about intentional culture of care.
Can I ask real quick clarification? So the program that we call MTSS or multi-tiered, is that a one-to-one direct map to column two? Or is column two different or broader than the MTSS program?
I would answer that question of this.
It would be broader because MTSS also encompasses in a, in a full model that we're still working towards. It's also encompassing behavioral intervention supports that would happen at a tier systemic level as well. So it, it's a comprehensive MTSS system has kind of two sides of a triangle, if we go back to that. One side would be the academic intervention side, that it consists of that tier one, tier two, tier three. And the other side would be behavioral intervention. So if a student is not responding to the typical redirection or proximity that a teacher would demonstrate when there's misbehavior, then we can go into some tier two interventions where they might need explicit instruction or small group time with a counselor to learn a skill or to be backfilled with some sort of like social friendship group, something like that. So it goes in tiered levels similar to an academic side is the behavioral side.
So focus two is about the academic MTSS area. Our focus three, which is the intentional culture of care, is actually where we choose to address the behavioral MTSS side. We just didn't put both of MTS in the one focus two. Does that make sense? SLC USC will create an intentional culture of care that includes a focus on student social emotional wellness. And I hope you've been hearing all the things around counselors, wellness center, all, all the things. And also the important parent connectedness. And we know that parent engagement and family engagement matters to student success. And so this focus three is where we would be sure that we're capturing that.
I have a question about the wellness center.
Yeah.
So of course there will be counseling needs being met, but also will there be medical needs?
I am not, I am not aware of any nursing medical right now. It is staffed by a, a counselor, they're pissed and person, um, they're not.
It's mainly individual and small group counseling.
Yeah, there is no medical medication, because students would go to the health office, nurse office for any of their medical.
Any, any medical things that, my understanding at this school is that we do physicals for sports. We do eye exams and hearing stuff and required eye.
Uh huh, those are required by the state.
And then, yeah.
And ice packs and.
Right, right, yeah.
Band-aids and that kind of thing.
At this point, at this point, no.
Right.
There's not a medical component, there's not anything, the intercurrent wellness focus at this point. If that changed or whatever, we.
And if any one of you would like to go visit, we can set that up with Janet Goul to tour the health wellness, the, the wellness centers at the two high schools. So a really critical component of the LCAP, as you know, require that we gather input from members across our school and parent community. And this should be a familiar graphic to you, these are all of the different places that we are planning to gather uh, input and outreach. And I am actually not going to go through this slide right now today because uh, just a couple days from now, I'm gonna have the opportunity to present at the board meeting on Tuesday night entirely about this slide. So we're going to move forward for now, but you can, you're welcome to send me any specific questions you have before then. And I'll be happy to make sure that I be prepared for that on Tuesday.
I'd just like to say, I'm glad to see the, the parent community and this slide and the previous slide, that there is a desire for connecting us and that it is a big goal. And there's a number, a number of ways that we can educate the parents. I mean, we will receive less, perhaps frantic parents, the more education they have about what's, what they can expect in school.
And a really important team is our, called our LCAP advisory team. It's a district committee that includes staff, students and parents. They kind of do three different activities. Um, we're meeting at the end of January, on the twenty fifth, um, with this group. And their role is to develop the LCAP survey that's going to be going out electronically to all families, staff and students. I think we send it to students, maybe not, I don't know, we'll find out more, we'll tell you more. Um, and then we're, that group analyzes the data once it comes back in and disaggregates the data from all the state pillar groups. And then they will present like an overview of what the major trends were to influence what goes into the LCAP decisions. So that's one of the main groups that will be giving us data. And you'll see here, this is our timeline roadmap, so we're gonna, today we're talking about the LCAP. We're gonna be number two is we're gonna have that first LCAP advisory team meeting. I will be back in February twenty twenty four at a board meeting to give an update on which groups have we talked to and which groups are we gonna talk to next and any things we're hearing. In March, we'll give you a board presentation about the summary of feedback we've received from all the community. In April, we'll be bringing to you the goals, action and budget called the GAB. And now if you can look at the packet again, so you know, um, the second item in this packet is the GAB for the current year. So this is what I will be providing to you in April for the upcoming month, but this is the one we're currently implementing. And then in May, we'll have the opportunity to do a first reading of the LCAP, our actual official narrative plan that will be turning into CDE. And then we'll also, we, we have to review our state indicators at that time, our local indicators, which one is it? I can't remember, I think it's local. Okay, I think we have to do our local indicators and then present the LCAP simultaneously in a board meeting to you is what the goals are. Um, and then you would approve it in June.
Thank you, I do have any additional questions? Um, I will see if our member of the public has any questions.
No hands are up.
No hands are up, alright, thank you, at this time, oh, sorry.
At, at what point, I was curious, at what point, thinking about the MTSS, we think about it in tiers. Um, at what point does level one become special education? What differentiates like a, a level two intervention from a level one intervention? And when does level one become special ed? Which is a, which is, which I understand we're not really supposed to be spending our LCAP funds on special education.
So, yeah, level one, our tier one would be described, absolutely.
Yeah, I can pause this at tier three, yeah, yeah.
Um, would be described as something that typically what you try to look for is about eighty percent of your students are, are responding and, um, performing at the level that we would expect within tier one. So students that the other twenty percent could potentially fall into the tier two or the tier three. So when a student isn't responding in a typical fashion to academic instruction or behavioral interventions, that's where we step into tier two. It is not considered special education without a tier one nor tier two. Sometimes even tier three is not considered special education. So at a school site, for example, an academic intervention within an MTSS model could look like a student being pulled out into a small group with another teacher, instructional aide, receiving supplemental instruction. It could also look like a student being pulled into a small group with their teacher as well within the classroom.
This would be tier, tier two.
And this is tier two, but receiving something different than what the core, what a tier one instruction would be. It would be to fill that knowledge gap for either one child, two child, maybe four, five kids. Um, that is what tier two is. And also on the behavioral side of things can look like a student participating in a small group with a counselor, such as a friendship group, like I mentioned earlier, they're having, let's say, trouble initiating play on the playground. They might go to a small group with a counselor to receive specific instruction and practice on how to do that. So then in tier three, if, um, tier two is still not successful, we might try even smaller groups before we then take a look at an individualized education plan or special education. So we want to go through those trials of various interventions multiple times before we try to then figure out, is there a learning disability or is there something going on with this child that we haven't been able to address with all of the level one and level, uh, tier two interventions?
Another couple ways I've heard it described is tier one is what you're doing for all the kids. Tier two is traditionally a small group of kids get something. And tier three is when a child's needs are so unique, they have to do it completely by themselves because they're like an outlier that's that significant, so that's another way to look at it. Um, another way to look at it is, you know, tier one are kids who are making progress to achieve a year's worth of growth in a year's time. Level two kids are like one year behind, but they're likely gonna catch up. And so you're still teaching the current grade level stuff with extra help. Tier three would be children who are more than one year lag behind. And they actually need instruction that's completely out of the grade level to be able to close the gap. So those are two other ways to think about that tier.
So, oh, for newcomers with a different language, you wait three years before you decide to put them in SED, uh, uh, special ed rather?
So we're actually working right now on refining our assessment practices as it relates to special education and English learners because it hasn't been defined, we're finding it's not been that clear cut a process or we're having trouble finding documentation of what that clear process is. But Eve, you're right in saying that we actually, the state of California is redefining it taking five to seven years to learn a second language. And so we would not want to be identifying an English learner as having a disability related to any kind of language communication, et cetera, unless they've had five to seven years of English instruction. Because we would expect them to be producing a different level, et cetera, because they're still learning English.
Okay, so it might go to five or a six.
It actually might go longer, yes, but we are currently working with Leilani Green um, to redefine our processes and procedures as well as Janet and Joyce Hansen in the Special Student Services Department.
But when personality, personality disorder, expert.
Of, of course, right, exactly, Mark, that's why we're saying, it depends on the type of disability. So a learning disability you wouldn't expect, but if they were, if they had a, um, other health impairment, a medical disability that's not related to any kind of language learning or if they had, uh, mental regression that showed developmentally delayed abilities, yes, they still get identified no matter what language they speak. So it depends on the eligibility area.
Anything else?
Right.
So process wise, when we do the next three-year LCAP, when and how does that get defined and? Does that start July?
That's here, it's this one.
So.
I, I thought that was finishing what we.
No, no.
No, no, this is, no, no, we're going to sort of bring to you in May.
I thought that would have been a voice, okay. Okay, that makes more sense.
The new LCAP.
The new LCAP for twenty four, twenty five. So in May, we'll do an introduction reading with you and then you vote on it in June for implement.
And it takes effect July?
Implementation in, yes.
Okay.
But what's important, some, some districts do this differently. Um, it's a massive document and so I'm trying to bring you along as it's being developed.
Oh, yeah, you'll be familiar.
Right? So you're gonna, you're gonna see updates, you're gonna see, um, uh, evidence of, of our formal outreach efforts and what we're seeing and what we're hearing about. So that when, in May, when you, um, actually in, um, April, you'll start hearing student senate recommendations, parent common ground recommendations, district equity team recommendations, parent leader recommendations, you'll start seeing that come across in board meetings so that when you see the LCAP, you'll have, it, it's a data download, it's a data dump, it'll all start making sense, right? So when you approve the document, the LCAP document, you're also approving the budget. But then soon thereafter, in June, we have the board workshop. At which point, you've already adopted the budget, you've already adopted the, um, the LCAP, you've heard all the inputs. And that's when you establish the priorities for the superintendent and the district moving forward the following year.
And that makes a, for whatever reason, I thought that whole roadmap was to review the end of this last LCAP and that makes a lot more sense.
Let me.
And it's a three-year process.
So let me, this is what I heard, is we're gonna do the budget, we're gonna adopt something else as a board and then we're gonna have a meeting where we decide on the priorities. To me, that sounds backwards. The board does its priorities, then we do whatever, and then we do the budget, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it, it would if, if you, but that's partially, partially, um, I understand the point, but, um, it's partially incomplete. When you adopt the budget.
Yeah.
And the LCAP.
Yeah.
And you've already heard all the inputs that go into the LCAP, you're set, you're effectively establishing your primary priorities for the year. The workshop is, um, is designed to say, okay, here's what you approved in the LCAP, which is really where our part, that's our, that's, that's our meat and potatoes. But in addition to that, that's where the board members get to say, in addition to that, we would like to see these things.
It's our retreat, it's what we always do.
No, I, 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 yeah, I just.
So it's, the, the big chunk of what you do is done in June when you adopt the budget. The workshop, the summer retreat is really to set my direction.
Right.
In addition, so that's LCAP priorities, and then in addition, Dr. Prater, we want to see these things happen. In addition to that.
Another way to think of it too is the goals we're writing for this LCAP are related to the current board goals you all set in July. Right, so you have set board goals and even though we're writing new goals, they're still gonna be addressing those, you know, they'll be connected to the goals you currently set.
Okay, anything else? Alright, well, we will adjourn our study session and we will move, um, we'll go ahead and close the Zoom because we will now be. we'll go ahead and close the Zoom, because we will now be moving into closed.